Thanks, everyone, for coming. Can I get a motion to open the meeting, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please rise and join me at the plate.
To the fire of the United States of America and through the Republic where we stand, on a nation under God, indivisible, with everything just as for all.
Good evening again. Thank you all for coming. I'm going to turn it over now to our superintendent, Ms. Tona.
Thank you, Vice President Savino. Welcome, everyone. So tonight, we're going to start off with a presentation from Chris Glavitz from Tetra Tech, our architects, and Lou Rodriguez from Palumbo Group, our project managers, about the district's capital project. So I'll turn it over to Chris and Lou. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thanks, Christine. We have -- my name's Christopher Glavitz. Uh-oh, I touched the cord. My name's Christopher Glavitz. I'm with Tetra Tech Architects and Engineers. We're working with Lou Rodriguez and the Palumbo Group and have had the pleasure of doing so for the last couple of years to help you prepare for your capital project referendum and complete some of the capital projects, some of which are complete and some of which are ongoing. So we'll give you a status update on where things stand. Quick overview. So we'll talk a little bit about the budget, give a quick summary of that, talk about the timeline, go through what construction has been completed, what's under construction, what's ongoing. I know if you've driven past the middle school, you might have a little agita about that paving, you know, happening, but a lot happens in the last couple of weeks of summer, and the contractors are working diligently out there. And we'll talk a little bit about future construction as well. This is a slide of the estimates and the capital project plan that was presented to voters before the vote. Okay? So this was kind of represented the planning that budgeted for the close to $54 million referendum that the voters did approve. This is an updated summary slide that shows some of the different packages that we have structured that capital project work into. The early, what we call the early package, which was some roofing work that we were able to do more quickly, is complete. The Phase One package, which had a lot of work in the high school in this building, is almost complete. The Phase Two, what we're calling that work, we ended up splitting it into two pieces, and I'll talk a little bit about why. So Phase Two A is under construction right now. They're really working on that, trying to get the demolition and the new work done at Fulmer Road, Austin, and Falls Building. Phase Two B pushed off a little bit. You may have heard in the news that there are supply chain issues, right? Anybody heard about that in the last couple of years? Construction managers have to deal with that every day. So knowing that we were about to bid that work, we were trying to be smarter about some of the equipment, mostly mechanical equipment, that we knew had very long lead times, and breaking it up so that we could anticipate that. So that's Two B that we're going to bid soon. Phase Three is a smaller project that includes some carpet, what we call a re-carpet at your synthetic turf stadium, the original one. There's also a little piece of what we call smart bond work, which adds security cameras and door security improvements district-wide. So this shows, you know, with the estimates that Lou has provided and combined with the bids that we've received already and what we call construction contingencies, because you always, you take a wall apart, you discover things. So we budget for all that, and we're in a really good place. Lou, if you want to talk more about the bids that we've received, we've gotten good competitive bids. If there's anything you feel like we need to add to that. No, you're good? Sorry, I keep hitting the cord here. How about that? I think I stepped on it that time. Well, I'll keep going while we're working on this. This next slide was just going to touch on schedule. So as I mentioned, the early package is complete. It included a bunch of roofing work as well as adding those new lights out at your stadium field, those new LED athletic lighting. Thank you. That looks great. I'm going to keep my distance. I can just use my outside voice so I don't mess it up again. So you'll see that sort of the vertical bar there toward the right is kind of where we are in time. So the early package is done. The Phase One work, we're just cleaning up the last little pieces of that. We should be wrapping that up soon. Phase Two A is really what we're hot and heavy on at the moment in terms of construction. Phase Two B, we're going to bid soon this fall in anticipation of starting construction next summer for that. We did also break out what we call an HVAC co-op so that's so that we can order some of that mechanical equipment, chiller for the middle school, some air handling units, other mechanical equipment that is 20, 30, 40 week lead time plus very long lead times to order this equipment. So we want to do that proactively so that when the summer rolls around, we have that in hand and we can turn it over to contractors to install. So trying to be proactive and think a little bit differently about how we get capital projects done successfully in this really tough construction environment right now. And then Phase Three, I mentioned, that's about to go out to bid. We just received SED approval for that just two days ago. So we're looking to get that bid and get that work underway. And then I mentioned the smart bond work, which is cameras and card readers. So there's a lot of pieces moving right now, and we're moving through and completing work. So just, you know, a couple pictures, because it's good to see, you know, with all this work and all the time that's gone into it and the approvals that the community gave to actually see the benefits of all that. So roofing is not particularly exciting, but it keeps, you know, your students dry and everything, the infrastructure up going, and that's a big piece of what the capital projects help the district do. And here's a picture of your new stadium lighting, so maybe you've enjoyed a game out there at night and enjoyed that lighting. So Phase One, this is the scope from the referendum. So, you know, we've talked, we've looked at this slide a lot of times, and this is the before shot, you know, so when we were planning and Mr. Fafaro was in on that and some other board members, as we identified those needs that were most important for the district. So, you know, the science rooms have been redone. So here are a couple of pictures of some of those completed spaces. The music suites, the band room, and the choral room were redone as well. The STEM suite is up and running, so students were in there as of last September as well, taking advantage of updated learning spaces. And the library, which was scheduled to complete a little bit later just because of the size of it, is also up and running. So we're really excited when we can turn over spaces to the district and have students learning in them. Of course, the turf field, if you've driven past, you know, between the middle school and high school, you drove right past this, and students have been on that practicing, playing. And so now that leads us to a couple of the pieces for Phase One, and I'm going to turn it over to Lou for a minute and say a couple words just about where we stand on the pieces that were always scheduled to be done this summer.
Hey now. We got it. So yeah, so, you know, when you're looking at the work that's happening right now is we're really finishing a lot of Phase One work that was supposed to be completed this summer. The photos that you're seeing right now are in front of the middle school, substantial amount of work. It's all new circulation, parking, stormwater containment. So there's all new stormwater that's built into this plan. And when you also see curbs, sidewalks, significant amount of work that's happening. And we will be sliding into home right before the kids get here. So, but once you realize the new circulation parking, it's going to be pretty impressive. And it's, we've added parking on the side of the middle school as well that's facing the new sports fields, if you want to. So these pictures are, again, it's showing, this is showing a new sports field, synthetic field that's going to be outside of the middle school. And soccer, and there's also parking there as well. So expanded parking for the sports program and also for the building itself. And these are all, you know, shots from the roof. But you see, we're touching every aspect of this site. Everything around the building's been touched, inclusive what's not shown here, you know, the water tank. We pulled out a huge water tank out of the front of the building that's, you know, we're doing a new water treatment project. And it's going to be pretty special when it's completed. So pretty excited about it. But again, I know, like Chris said earlier, parents are going to be a little excited about what's happening. Are we going to be done? We're going to be right there to the last minute. Paving's going to be happening starting in the next week or so. So you're going to really see things starting to come together with the site work. Okay, you took out the other pictures.
We'll get to that in a second. Yeah, so Phase Two A, which is this work at the Austin Road, Fulmer, and Falls Building, includes improvements mostly to the library media center, we're doing that district-wide, as well as security improvements at the front entrance. So those are the two big pieces. We're also going through and doing some infrastructure stuff to include, to improve fire alarm, PA systems, clocks, and electrical panels, just nuts and bolts stuff that help the schools function safely and in a modern way. So that's ongoing. Similar scope at Fulmer Road, library renovation, front entrance security. We're adding a light, an elevator. That's that little gold rectangle kind on the top left there to increase accessibility, because there's currently no way for handicapped folks to get from the upper level to the lower level, going outside, going around. So that's a basic amenity that we're adding to that building. At the Falls Building, similar front entrance renovations to improve the security there. Some boiler room work back in the back there to just infrastructure stuff and improving some bathrooms up near the front to give a little more functionality to just being able to hold the events that happen in there. There are a lot of teachers coming in and out using that professional development space that Mike uses a lot. So here are a couple pictures, and then we're going to give a quick update.
Yeah, so these, the libraries were to be demoed, gutted this summer. So they're demolished and ready for new, you know, new finishes. A lot of the finishes, of course, we, again, because of the material supply deliveries and whatnot, we're going to be working in second shift during the fall to complete this. Per contract, these spaces were always scheduled to be completed by the end of October. So right now, we're still on schedule to have these spaces completed by the end of October. By design, we knew we couldn't have the materials here, but we did all, any asbestos abatement work that was required, all of the messy work that was taken, you know, that was required was taken care of. So really, second shift, it's now coming back and putting in new finishes at the libraries. Again, they're going to be pretty special when they're complete.
You mentioned the security vestibles and the schedule on that.
Yeah, so another big part of the projects are the security vestibles. The security vestibles, when we bid the work, were supposed to be completed in the summer of 2023. And again, when you look at the hardening requirements of the, of those doors, the window fronts and whatnot, we on purpose put that for the summer of 2023. We did talk about trying to expedite that work and see if we can get some of that work done this summer, and we just couldn't get the materials. But again, the contractors, the way the schedule was purchased from them, they will be back in the summer of 2023 to do that work. We also have the elevator addition. The elevator addition is going to be something that, you know, again, we pushed that into the fall/winter of 2022, and we're still on schedule to have that work completed as well, so.
So one of the, one of the other projects that I didn't have on the previous list is an energy performance contract. The way those are structured, they kind of pay for themselves through the energy savings that you achieve through them. So that's ongoing as well. They're finishing that up. There are a couple pieces outstanding. There's a photovoltaic system on the roof at Lakeview Elementary that is ready to go. It's waiting for some parts with chips, computer chips, if you've, you know, heard about that supply chain issue. We're running into that. Also, there's a electrical transformer that I think paid for in October that Nice Egg is going to deliver at some point. We don't know when, but, so there's a couple pieces that we're looking at there to finish those up. I think Lou talked about the Phase One items, the synthetic turf field that's looking like early fall. The site contractors were really focusing on that front area to get that back online. The middle school entrance traffic we talked about, and we're hopeful that that will not only improve safety for students getting into that, but, you know, if you're a parent here and you're coming off Merrell Road or coming here, there's, it gets crazy in the morning, so hopefully that traffic flow will be a little bit better in the front of the middle school there. And Lou talked, mentioned the main campus water, so that the high school well is still supplying water to this campus, the three buildings on this campus. But you'll see a lovely new water tank, tens and tens of thousands of gallons there for water storage, as well as a little building there that has pumps in it and filtration equipment so that the water quality will be improved over, you know, especially what's been experienced in the middle school over recent years, that salty taste. And so we're excited to be able to deliver better quality of water to this campus. So those are pieces that they're working on. And you'll see the water truck out front. That's because we're switching over to that water supply right now. Contractors are really working very hard right now to get that switched over, and that'll be done by the start of school. Yes. We talked mostly about Phase Two A stuff as well already. Just give a preview for Phase Two B. So Lakeview Elementary School will be receiving some of the mechanical upgrades, but also some renovations to their library space, some improvements to the security vestivule, some improvements to the nurse suite, just to modernize that area, as well as a couple areas for OTPT, it's school psychologists, and then up where the girls locker room used to be next to the gym, providing some small group instruction spaces for the school as well. So some renovations around. We'll be adding air conditioning to the cafeteria. So that's the space that was identified early on as, as we were trying to identify, at least one large space at each school for cooling. At the middle school, we have some renovations as well in the library media center upstairs. The planetarium will be renovated into a large group instruction space, so getting some more instruction back there with some tiered seating. STEM classroom upgrades, as well as the kitchen serving area to improve that flow there, because that's quite a bottleneck when it's time to feed the kids. So those are the main pieces of the middle school. Phase Three, I mentioned, is replacing the turf. So that's really just the carpet, not going all the way down, because a lot of that material's still in good shape, but also resurfacing the track. Okay? So there'll be some upgrades to that, mostly just things, you know, aging out. They've lived their useful life, and they're ready to be replaced. And I'll just mention that this was not part of the original program, but we were able to add this work in because of the good bids that we got and the good performance that we've seen from contractors and the estimating from Lou and his group as well, so we have a little space there. The smart bond work is, like I said, cameras and card readers, and that's at all the buildings. So we just had a good meeting today with building leadership, going through building by building, to just confirm those locations and make sure that the cameras and the swipe cards and stuff are going to be in the best locations for them. So that will be coming up soon. We're trying to finalize that contract right now. So any questions? Yeah. I don't know if I'm leading or if you guys want to manage.
I think it's great doing all the schools, all the fields, and I've seen Lou working all the categories, all the buildings. But I have not seen anything upgrading the bus transportation. I can't say I'm going to do it for the bus drivers, Dave. Is there anything planned on that?
Yeah, actually, there were some upgrades to that, some mechanical system upgrades and electrical upgrades as part of Phase One. There have been a number of conversations about the age of that building and the clear height inside, how high you can get those buses up, considering how much to invest in that building before building a new one. So that's a larger conversation that we talked about in the planning that Dave and others might remember, but also to improve the exhaust for the folks that work in there, get an exhaust system in there and put the heat in. I'm sorry?
There is discussion on getting that done, or?
No, that, so the ventilation, the heating, that is complete. There's an ongoing discussion about how much to invest in that building before building a new building. That's a larger, much larger conversation.
I thought the budget proposal, that money in for the lift, that was part of the budget, a couple hundred thousand, something like that.
The general fund budget has one lift scheduled for this year, and then we're looking to include that money in next year's budget to get the second lift. And I just want to also thank Chris and Lou for their work. Christina Howe is here with us this evening. She's our new interim assistant superintendent for business, and she's been working very hard, very closely with Chris Lou. We have regular meetings to keep us all in the loop, and it's a lot of moving parts, and we're real happy with the work that's being done, and we're looking forward to the first day of school, when we slide into home and see everything come to fruition. So, and I want to thank the employees, the 12-month employees that are here at the Fall School, the High School, the Middle School, for their patience this summer. There's a lot of work going on, and transportation as well. There hasn't been running water from time to time in those locations, and it's been a challenge. But the fruits of that challenge are coming into the final stages, and within the next week or two, all the water will be back on, and we'll have a much better system. So we appreciate everyone's patience. It was definitely a challenge in a hot summer, and we did have alternate arrangements, which are not always the easiest during the summer to get to. So thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
And just to add one more item, and Chris and Lou touched upon it, that the early package and Phase One have come in under budget. And so we do have some unencumbered funds at this point that are preliminary numbers. And as we go through the remainder of the project, we are hopeful that we'll have some money left over at the end of the project so that the board and administration can work together to identify other items that can be added in that are needed throughout the district. But again, as was mentioned, there are supply chain issues, and there are some cost issues, increased costs from things that might have been budgeted originally. So we're just going to keep an eye on that, and we look forward to having another update in maybe about six months or so, and let us know where we are.
Thank you.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thanks, guys. Tonight, we're going to be reviewing the district-wide safety plan and open up for comments for 30 days. At this time, Superintendent Tona will give you a brief overview. You may find the presentation and a more detailed overview and the submission for comments on our district clerk's page. And I would like to turn it back over to Ms. Tona.
Thank you very much, Vice President Savino. All right. So annually, schools across New York State must present a district-wide safety plan to the Board of Education for adoption. So there is a public hearing involved. So tonight is that public hearing. I'm just going to briefly give you a summary about this plan. It is an overview plan. It does not get into the specifics. There are additional plans for each of our buildings, but for safety reasons, those are not disclosed to the public. So every year, these plans are reviewed. We have a safety team in the district that reviews. We share the plans with the education department, as well as our local responders, the New York State Police Department, town karma police. And like I mentioned, this plan tonight can be shared publicly, but those specific building plans cannot. So I'd like to thank the District Health and Safety Committee for assisting us with the development of this plan. And that committee includes staff members, school safety personnel, parents, and community members. So the district-wide safety plan has quite a few components, as you'll see if you take a look at the plan on the website. So the first component is just identifying the purpose of the plan, the team members that are involved. Then the second component looks at risk prevention and intervention. That's where a link to the code conduct is, different types of training drills and exercises that need to be conducted at each building, and information about the local agencies. The third component is our emergency response information, how we communicate, what procedures are followed, and how we coordinate with the local agencies. And then this fourth section touches upon what happens after the crisis happens, how do we recover from that crisis, where do we get support from, what are the procedures that need to be followed? And the fifth component, it talks about communicable disease. It does touch upon, we just went through the COVID pandemic. We're hopeful that we don't need to look at this section of the plan, but it needs to be in there just in case. Annual emergency drills are held in all of our buildings. There needs to be 12 emergency drills each year. Four of them must be lockdown drills and eight evacuation drills, or old-fashioned fire drills. Eight of the drills have to be completed by December 31st of each year, and those first eight drills have to be a combination of lockdown drills and evacuation drills. So our students are quite familiar with these types of drills, our staff are quite familiar, but we keep practicing so that if there's an unfortunate crisis, everyone knows how to respond. So this public comment period will run through September 18th, 2022. If you have any comments that you'd like to make regarding this plan, you can go on to the district clerk's page on the district website, and there's a link that you can just click on to submit those comments. And the Board of Education will consider adoption of this plan at the September 22nd, 2022 meeting. Does anyone on the board have any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tona. On for our regular meeting agenda, can I get a motion to accept the treasurer's report for May 2022, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to accept a warrant for May of '22?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And a motion to accept the revenue status report for May of 2022, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So you get a motion to accept the budget transfers for May of '22, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, can I please get a motion to accept the minutes for the June 16th, 2022 meeting?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Ms. Tona? Back to you.
Thanks, Vice President Savino. So this is the last score meeting before the opening of school, so we're very excited about the new school year. Our first day for kindergartners, sixth graders and ninth graders will be Tuesday, September 6th, and all students will be in on Wednesday, September 7th. That allows for a transition day for our students entering buildings for the first time. So we're, we're very excited about giving those students the opportunity to have the building all to themselves, so that they can really acclimate before the rest of their building mates arrive the next day. So information from myself, from the building principals, will start to be delivered to families next week, so be on the lookout for that. Our district calendar is also being finalized and should be on the website soon, hopefully by the end of next week. I'd like to thank our buildings and ground staff for their work in readying all of our buildings, especially, like was mentioned before, the added challenge of the construction work throughout the district. And thanks to all of our 12-month staff, clericals, administrators, transportation department. Summer is such a busy time in a school district. It's a time for our students and our 10-month employees to enjoy and relax and recharge, but the 12-month staff definitely works very hard to make sure that everything is ready for the opening of schools. So thank you. We couldn't be ready without all of their efforts. Full sports practice begins next week, so I'm looking forward to seeing our student athletes out on the field. Hopefully, the weather cooperates, because we did have quite a few hot days, and I understand that it got a little cooler out in the past hour or so, so I'm hoping that continues for our athletes next week. Middle school orientation for sixth grade students is on Monday, August 22nd. And thank you to everyone who participated in this month's Community Connections right prior to this meeting. And the next meeting will be at our September, right before our September board meeting at 6:00 PM. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tona. I'd like to turn it over to Trustee Martinez to read a donation.
The Board of Education hereby accepts a Special Olympics New York donation of $2,000 in funding to support the unified champion's collective activity in unified sports, inclusive youth leadership and whole school engagement.
Can I please get a motion to accept the donation from these Special Olympics?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to accept tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have no resonant comments? Is that correct, Willie? Okay. So with that, I want to thank everybody again. It's hard to believe we're approaching a new school year. Once again, so excited to see everybody back in the buildings, back on the fields. We're looking forward to a great year. And next month, our meeting will be back at the Falls School. Again, Community Connections will be at 6 o'clock, the meeting will be at 7 o'clock. And that is all we have for tonight. We have some executive content we need to discuss, some legal matters. So can I get a motion to go into executive session, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone, for coming, and have a great night.